Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the special session of Breathwork with Scott Stabile. I'm Jacob Nordby. I'm with Heal Plus Create. I'm so happy you've joined us for this session. It's an experience I've had several times now, and it is so powerful. I love Scott being our teacher because he is not only a masterful guide, but he's very gentle in his approach. So he makes us feel safe as we're moving through this experience of release, of opening up, of letting in the light, letting in the breath. So I'm just glad you're here. And as we begin, I want to take a moment and set the ritual space. One thing we crave so much in modern life is meaningful ritual. Those of you who have joined me before have heard me say that. But that's been a refrain that's been going on for a long time. Carl Jung brought a lot of attention to that back in the day. And I think it's even more true now than it was then, as many religions have sort of lost their hold. And people don't feel like there's safety in some of those really old belief systems. We don't lose the need for creating ritual because it helps us connect and bring our intention into focus. And it helps us get more out of an experience, whatever that might be. And this doesn't have to be spiritual or religious. It can be connection, social experiences as well. We crave meaningful ritual. And so I love to set the tone of saying, welcome. Let me invite you into meaningful rituals. So with this candle, if you feel like lighting one of your own, that would be lovely, not required. I want to invite you into this space. And just before I bring Scott on, a couple of things, I just wanted to show you, for those of you who aren't actually real quick in chat, before we get started with that, who is experiencing breath work for the very first time in this way? Just pop and chat if that's a yes or a no for you, if you would. I'm just curious. Okay, some yeses coming in. I'm just curious how many done a little. Okay, wonderful. And Scott makes it so easy for us, whether we've done it a dozen times or no times, he makes it easy. So that's great. Let me show you something, though, because this is first through this group. Oh, cool, Rachel. I'm looking for my share screen. There it is. This is part of really woven into everything we do here at Heal Plus Create is we seek to have experiences that are embodied, that we can experience actually in our bodies, not just in our reasoning minds, so that we can begin to build practices in life of coming down into what I love to call the green zone. If you're looking at this chart on the screen right now, this is the parasympathetic nervous system. And we find that most of us live a lot of our lives up in these aroused states of fight or flight, or even into freeze. And those come with them a lot of, you know, either anxiety or shutdown and even depression and things like that. That is part of, that's a normal part of our modern life with as busy as we are and as quickly as we're moving, as quickly as things are changing. We're dealing with change constantly. And if you look at the characteristics of the green zone, though, you're going to notice that there are some really interesting attributes about this where when we enter the green zone, and this exists in our bodies and our nervous systems in our mind, it exists there at all times. Some of the sages would call this the ground of our being or our truly natural state. Most of us are living outside of our truly natural state a lot of the time. I know I do. And I have to be very intentional about practicing coming down into this state as often as I can, hopefully on a daily basis. And it doesn't have to look like special meditations necessarily, or a special kind of breathing. Although we use these practices, and some of these are tremendously effective doorways in. But look at some of the characteristics of the green zone, joy in the present, connected, curious and open, feeling of safety. And overhear what's happening in your body is remarkable. You increase your resistance to infection and your immune response. You get better rest and recuperation, and you get this oxytocin. I was listening to a podcast this week where a doctor was talking about oxytocin. We call that almost like the god chemical because when it appears on the scene, we open up, we relax, we are able to feel safe. We also are opened up to resources and intuition. We feel better. Amazing things happen in the green zone. And if you've followed any kind of spiritual tradition or meditation or yoga or many self-help practices, this is kind of the holy grail of most of these practices is finding yourself into the green zone. So as I introduce Scott, I just want to keep, help you keep in mind that is what is going on inside of you as you're experiencing this with us. All right, let me kill the share. That's kind of a, that's kind of aggressive way to say that. Kill the share. See who else is here with us. Welcome, Nikki. I think I've said hi to everyone else. All right, let's get Scott on camera here, and I will introduce him. Scott has some really exciting things coming up. Hello, Scott Stabile.
Hey, everybody. Hi, Jacob.
Glad to see you, brother.
You too, always.
Scott, I was just getting ready to say some of your exciting things, one of which is a book that you just got a.
No, don't say, no, no, no.
Not that? Yeah.
Okay. Please.
The other thing, well, I'm excited for you. We won't talk about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. The other thing I'm really excited about, though, is your, you have this practice that you started last year called Imagine It. And I, I love it. I shared it with everyone last year, and I'm so glad Bill shared it again. Could you give us a brief, what's going on with that?
Yeah. Hey, everybody. I'm so happy to be here with y'all. Yeah, it's a workshop starting on January 2nd that I offered at the beginning of this year, and it's a creative visualization workshop. And for those of you who aren't familiar with visualization, it is, for me, one of the most effective tools in creating the kind of life we want to be living. And so we jump into 2023 really actively considering the most important aspects of our lives. So it's, we meet Monday through Friday for two weeks. We spend an hour together Monday through Thursday and two hours on Friday. And each day is dedicated to a different theme that matters most to our lives. For instance, our relationship with ourselves. How do we want that to look? Our relationship with our partner, if we have one, if we're seeking to call one in, our relationship to our creativity, to our physical health, to our mental health, all of the things really that matter most to us as humans. We're going to really give intentional visualization around looking at what it feels like to live into the healthiest version of those relationships in all of those areas. So it's a beautiful way to, out of honoring your time, I want to get into the breath work soon. But I encourage you to check, Jacob will share a link, and I really encourage you to check it out because it's a really beautiful way to come into the new year very intentionally. And the thing about visualization, it's not only wildly effective, it's really fun. And I know Jacob and I on our podcast, we end up talking about visualization a lot, but not even necessarily focused on visualization, but because that's how we're choosing to live our lives. And it's, it's brought a lot of beautiful circumstances and realities into our lives because we're so committed to visualizing what it is we want to be experiencing.
Yes. Yeah, Scott, I just wanted to welcome Gigi. And as I mentioned before, once we get started here, we won't be letting more people in. But I'm just so happy you're here, everyone who's here. I did pop the link to Imagine It in the chat, so you can grab that now. I was going to say I would do it at the end, but at the end of this, Scott generally walks us out and we don't hang around and chat. So grab it real quick and just leave your tab open so you can look at it later.
Yeah, beautiful. So let me, let me introduce the breath to you all. We're going to be, we're going to be doing today a breath that is a two-part inhale. It's an inhale into your lower belly and then into your upper chest. And then just an exhale. It's all going to be done in and out through the mouth. So hold on, I like to do my little side demo. Glenda knows this well. Glenda's seen this angle of meanwhile. So you go into the lower belly, upper chest, and then exhale. Inhale, lower belly. You can do it with me. Inhale, lower belly, upper chest, and then exhale. So the breath is very straightforward, but it's not a breath we're used to breathing. So it's likely to feel a bit awkward to you if this is your first time, even if it's not your first time, it might still feel a little awkward to you. So when we get into the breath, you're going to be doing that the whole time in and out through your mouth. And you're going to be doing it with your eyes closed while you're, when we get into position, you'll be on your back. I encourage you, if it's comfortable, not to have anything under your head. So your throat chakra will be wide open. You're welcome to put cushions under your legs, you know, or lower back, if that helps you feel more comfortable. And if you need to put a cushion under your head, obviously do that. It's not going to destroy the experience. The breath that we're working with today, it's a highly energizing breath. And it is likely to create, for many of you, the experience of a lot of energy moving through your body that is, it's likely to feel unfamiliar. So I'm telling you this so that if that happens and your mind's like, what the hell is this energy moving through my body? I've prepped you. It's entirely common. There's nothing to worry about. You're only breathing. You may feel some tightness in your, in your hands. You may feel some tightness around your mouth. You're going to feel some sensations in your body that your mind's going to want to freak out about. It's, they're all common. I promise you, I felt everything in this practice. Again, you're only breathing. If you get uncomfortable in your body, if you're like, ah, and you really, you really want to bring yourself down from what you're experiencing, just open your eyes and return to your normal breath, and that will help to ground you and then jump back into the breath that we're doing together. What's so powerful and beautiful about this practice, there are so many things. But for me, one of, one of the biggest things is that this breath moves energy in a really powerful way. So I'm going to invite you in a moment to share in the chat, if you're coming into this session with an intention. If there's something you want to let go of in your life, something you need to release, whether that's emotional pain, physical pain, fears, anxiety, insecurity, this is a really great practice for releasing. It's for me the most effective practice I've ever experienced for releasing, clearing unstuck energy and letting go. If there's something you want to call into your life, it's a beautiful practice for that when you're inhaling. The inhale, you're breathing in the energy, the life of spirit, of nature, right? And so what do you want to call into your body? And the exhale, you're letting go of what it is you want to let go of. So expect to feel energy moving. It's great. Don't, don't, I have, I'm not going to make any promises about what you're going to experience in this one breath work session. What I will say, though, is I know people who have healed physical pain. I know people who've healed emotional pain. I have healed deep inner child wounds. I've healed, anything is possible within the context of breath work. So don't be afraid in your intention to make it something big, if that's what you're feeling right now. And just go in with that energy and see. It's entirely possible also that when you're in your breath work session, nothing to do with your intention is going to come up, and the breath is going to take you on a completely different journey. And that's also a beautiful intention, too. If there's nothing coming to mind is just let the breath do what the breath is going to do, right? So if you feel called in the chat, what's your intention for this journey? Why are you here?
Scott, while they're, while the, pardon me, while the chat is coming in, you mentioned two or three sessions ago, you said something kind of in passing. And I wanted to share it today because it's something I've taken out and used in my daily life, even while I'm driving. You said you'll breathe in four beats and breathe out six.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, activate the polyvagal nerve, and I've been using that now for the last couple of weeks. Sometimes at a stoplight or sometime when I'm just feeling tense, I just, and I wanted to share that because it's something you can take away from breath work and use all the time.
It's an extraordinary practice for relaxation, if you're, for dealing with anxiety is just, it doesn't have to be a four-beat inhale and a six-beat exhale. What's important is that your exhale is minimum two beats longer than your inhale. When we have a longer exhale to our inhale, we're communicating to our body that we're in a relaxed state. And so the body then enters a relaxed state. It's a beautiful way to connect with the parasympathetic nervous system. So you can do a two-beat inhale and then hold one beat and then exhale four beats. You can do three, five, you can do four, six, however you want to do it. But remember to hold that exhale out longer than your inhale. Yeah, thank you, Jacob. It really, it's such a grounding breath. So.
I've just been so grateful to have something that I'm using on a daily basis, kind of in whatever setting. Nobody even has to know I'm doing it.
Absolutely. I use that breath all the time as well. Thank you for bringing that up. I'm going to read through some of these intentions and continue sharing yours if you feel called. Rachel says, breathing in my inner music, lovely. Desiree, intention, releasing the pressure to get somewhere, to achieve, to get to the other side of the goal. Hallelujah, sister. I'm so with you on that intention. Maureen, I hope I'm saying your name right. Breathing away rib pain, beautiful. Costa, hey, brother. Breathe in love, breathe out regret and self-loathing, beautiful. Gigi, I live with a complex immune disorder that often results in life-threatening reactions. So have a chronic sense of stress around wondering if, when a reaction will occur. So wanting to find ways to help alleviate that stress. Thank you so much for being here. That's a powerful intention. And I hope this practice serves you. Anyone else? Nikki, breathing in spirit and knowledge for writing, lovely. Joey, releasing resentment, shame, grief, and welcoming flight forgiveness, including self-forgiveness, beautiful. I'm glad you're including self-forgiveness. We always have to include the self part to these things, too. Anyone else before we, before we get going? Oh, light. Okay, that makes more sense. I was like, but I thought you were saying welcoming flight. I'm like, he wants to fly. That made sense to me, too. Beautiful. So Jacob mentioned this, and I just want to say again, breath work is, is extraordinary at getting us out of our minds and into our bodies. So the reason we don't come back together at the end is because it's not about coming back into your mind and processing. It's about staying in the relaxed state as long as you are able. So we're going to be actively breathing today for about just under 29 minutes. And that's going to be followed by about a 10-minute relaxation. I'm going to, I'll be letting you know this at the end, but we're going to be closing out the Zoom session at the end of a short meditation after that relaxation. And I encourage you to be in that. It's like Shavasana in yoga. Stay in it as long as you're able to stay in it because that's when you're integrating all the juice of the active breathing journey. And you, you're going to want water nearby because you're going to be breathing in and out through your mouth. So when you come out of the breath work session, you're going to likely to have a dry mouth. And if you have a notebook nearby, a lot of times in breath work sessions, downloads come through, clarity comes through. And you get these nuggets that you might just want to jot down really quickly so they're, they stay with you. I just want to read Glenda's, I hope this breath work journey proves once again to be a pleasant diversion from my persistent holiday loneliness and sadness. I hope for you too, sister. And Wendy, breathe out disorganization, breathe in peace of nature. Yeah.
Hey, Scott, before, before you get started, I just, I always get to at the end, thank our teacher for being here and for sharing this with us. I just want to say that I so love what you do and your generosity in sharing it with us. And I won't get to say that at the end. So thank you, brother. And I want to also say thank you for creating a space where I, as the host, can go and actually participate. So this, this means a lot to me.
Awesome. Thank you so much, brother. I'm delighted. I love, this is such a joy for me. And I, on Wednesday, I do these typically weekly online as well. And I'm using on Wednesday, I love the playlist that I shared on Wednesday. So Glenda, you're going to have to hear the same music. But I'm sharing that playlist again because I'm very excited about it. All right, so I'm going, we need to do a sound check. And I'm gonna, I'm sharing my, my speakers and my computer with you directly, so you can adjust your volume accordingly. The music should be present. It needs to be a part of this journey. It's a part of where, what's going to take you where you're going. So you need to be able to hear the music. You need to be able to hear my voice. And let's do a little test. So set your speakers accordingly. This is going to be the volume on my side. I'm not going to adjust it. So just on your end. And this is how my voice sounds with music. Okay? Great. And then let's get into position. So position again, you're going to be on your back. Throat chakra wide open. You're going to have your eyes closed throughout. And the breath again, that we're going to be doing in and out through the mouth the entire time, is going to be an inhale into the lower belly, the upper chest, and then it's going to be an exhale, natural exhale. The pace at which I do my breath is not the pace you have to do it. I encourage you to mimic my breath in the beginning because it's going to get you in faster. But you're going to naturally move into your own rhythm. And you're going to, your mind is going to tell you, you're not doing the breath right. Your mind's going to tell you a lot of things. I'm going to be coming in throughout to remind you, lower belly, upper chest, and exhale. And that's going to be a reminder to breathe into the lower belly, into the upper chest, and exhale. And I really encourage you on this journey to just let whatever thoughts come, come, whatever feelings come, come, whatever, whatever's happening within you, trust it's what's meant to be happening within you and let it be as much as possible. So let's all begin breathing together. Inhale, lower belly, upper chest, and exhale. Let's start. Here we go. Have a beautiful journey, everybody. And just keep breathing the whole time. Coming out of your mind and into your body, into the breath. Continuing to breathe with an inhale into your lower belly, your upper chest, and an exhale. With every inhale, calling in the wisdom, the clarity, the love of spirit, the love of your inner knowing. With every exhale, releasing all that no longer serves you, all the stories, all the fears, all the insecurities and anxieties. Breathe them out on the exhale. You're doing great. Just keep breathing. Inhale, lower belly, upper chest, and exhale. Let yourself feel whatever it is you're feeling. Continue to come out of your mind and into this moment and into this breath. Keep going, keep breathing. Continuing to give yourself over to the breath. Inhale, lower belly, upper chest, and exhale. Trusting in your decision to be here. Trusting in the power within you to create profound change in your life. The power within you to create healing. Trusting in this moment, trusting in the breath. Follow it where it goes, be with wherever it takes you, and just continue to. Follow it where it goes, be with wherever it takes you and just continue to breathe. Inhale, lower belly, upper chest and exhale. You're doing great. Keep breathing. Feeling the energy continuing to build in your body. Knowing it's exactly what you need for your body, for yourself, for your healing. Make some noise on that exhale. Let out a sigh or a moan or a groan or a scream. As you're releasing on the exhale, make some noise and clear that energy out of your system. Clear it out of your experience, let it go. Free yourself from the stories that no longer serve you. Free yourself from the lies of your mind. Free yourself from all the fears and anxieties that prevent you from moving forward. Let them go and let them out. Continue to release on the exhale and just keep breathing. Come back to the breath. Inhale, lower belly, upper chest and exhale. You're doing beautifully. Just keep breathing. Keep the breath going. Inhale, lower belly, upper chest and exhale. Where is there stuck energy in your body? Send the inhale into that stuck energy and release it on the exhale. Where is there resistance? Where is there pain, emotional or physical in your body? With each inhale, send it into the pain and with each exhale, release it from your experience. Continuing on the inhale to call in the wisdom of spirit, the healing energy of spirit. And continuing on the exhale to let go of every single thing that doesn't serve you. And just continue to breathe. Inhale, lower belly, upper chest and exhale. Give yourself over to the breath, to this moment, to this experience. Surrender completely and just keep breathing. Lower belly, upper chest and exhale. You're doing great. Consider your intention for a moment. Bring your intention into the breath. With each inhale, bring energy into your intention. Create reality around it. Create the very real possibility of realizing the intention you set for yourself. And with every exhale, continuing to let go of anything that creates a barrier to you realizing your intention. Breathe it out on the exhale. Make some noise on the exhale. Release and let go on the exhale. And just keep breathing. Inhale, lower belly, upper chest and exhale. Moving into relaxation now. It's time to slowly return to your natural breath, in and out through the nose. There's nothing left for you to do, except be with whatever thoughts, whatever energy, whatever feelings are moving through your body right now. It is all just right. Just relax. Just relax. If it's comfortable, place your hands over your heart. And I'd like you to repeat the following statements out loud after me. I release self-loathing and commit to loving myself like never before. I release all stories and beliefs that no longer serve me. I release all blocks to abundance and full self-expression. I open myself up to more bliss and more joy each day. I am, at my core, unconditional love and peace. I am beautiful, just as I am. I am worthy, just as I am. I am enough, just as I am. As we get ready to close out this session, I want to invite you to connect to your heart center. To the energy of love that is alive within you. To that universe of love. Open yourself up to this energy, open yourself up to your heart. Knowing that the love within you is available to you all the time. Twenty-four seven, every day of the year. And that the voice of love within you is always there to remind you that you are enough, you are worthy, you are beautiful, you are whole, exactly as you are. The voice of love within you is always there to support you and cheer you on. Give yourself over to this love within you as often as possible. And watch how every single thing in your life changes for the better. With these next breaths, I want to invite you into your soul. Into that place within you that is only peace. That is always still. That is always okay. Give yourself over to this soul-centered place. That part of you that is aligned always with spirit. And with nature. Never in resistance, never at war. And know that this place, like the love in your heart, is available to you all the time. Should you choose it. And lastly, before we say goodbye, allow a smile to form on your lips. And connect to the energy of gratitude. Beautiful abundant energy of gratitude. And in this energy, offer yourself a big sincere thank you. For showing up today. For this work. For showing up for your healing. For showing up in this way for your life. This is not something to take for granted. And personally, I just want to tell you all thank you so much. This is a real honor for me to be able to guide you in this practice. And I send you off with so much love. And with a hope to see you again soon. Big, big love.